Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, once again we thank you for another day of grace and mercy. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We ask you to come down being amidst this gathering of city government. Give us clarity and understanding in decision-making and just direct in God our opinions. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with God on its side, united visible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Reed, the roll, please.
Carrie Hyde, Ward 1. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5. Tafran, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you. Julia, first order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from July 21st, and you've had an opportunity to look these over and make any edits. Now would be the time to note those. If not, motions in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started off with SU 22-02 this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a special use permit request for 40 Curtis Court off of Riverside Drive. The applicant is looking to operate a gymnastics and indoor athletic facility at this location. Planning Commission did recommend approval. Again, it is the second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Questions for Randy at this time from council? Thank you, sir. Seeing none, I'll open up a public hearing for SU 22-02 and ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And if you would, please, your name and address for our clerk.
Vicki Mouser, 52 Hamilton Boulevard Northwest, Cartersville 30120. And I'm just here to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Anybody got any questions? I'm gonna let you off easy tonight.
Awesome.
Thank you, Vicki. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak for or against? Now would be the time to do so. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for SU 22-02 and turn it over to council for further discussion and consideration.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Mr. Menino, if you'll get us started with the second reading of ordinances tonight.
Yeah, this is a proposed amendment to the alcohol ordinance regarding specialty shops. It addresses three things. One, it's looking to add distilled spirits to what can be sold in a specialty shop. Currently, only wine and craft beer can be sold. Second, it's looking to change the craft beer requirement for any beer as opposed to non-craft beer. And third, it's looking to change the percentage of alcohol sales, I believe from 35% to 49%. With that, it did go to the Alcohol Control Board. They did not have enough favorable vote, so it came here with a recommendation for denial. And with that, this is the second reading. We have made no changes since the first.
Thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. And Councilman Cooley, just, I know you weren't here last time. The Alcohol Control Board had a 3 to 2 vote in favor of it. Of course, just like with us, there requires four votes to pass along a positive recommendation. So they had a 3 to 2 vote, and like tonight, they had two people that were absent, so.
And on that also, Councilman Cooley, they only, the Alcohol Control Board only voted on the issue of the adding the non-craft beer to it. They said that they would not vote on the distilled spirits or the percentage issue.
Okay.
So that's what the 3 to 2 vote was on.
I have asked the owners of Southern Cove who put in the request, Jason and Buddy Frederick, to give a brief synopsis, just so you can get a little frame of reference as to why those requests are being made before council considers it. So again, you can do your name and your address for our clerk.
Sure. It's Jason Frederick. The address is 63 Riverwalk Parkway, U-Harley, Georgia, 30145.
And it's Buddy Frederick, 388 Oliver Drive, Dallas, Georgia, 30132.
Thank you. And like I said, just a synopsis on the requests.
So to fill you in and answer any questions you guys may have, we made the request based off an ordinance that is existing for the cigar bar, how their ability to sell distilled spirits and non-craft beer when they don't serve food. We are very comparable as far as our ordinances go. However, we are not allowed to do things that they are allowed to do, and we were wanting to try to even the playing field. What it's causing for us is we're losing business. People are coming there to our store on a date to shop and to have a drink, and their date night, they're actually splitting up. One of them may stay in the store to have, finish a drink, while the other one goes somewhere else to have something else that we can't serve them, whether it be Budweiser, McCultra, or bourbon. So we're trying to capture the revenue that we're losing, not being able to offer the product that you can get directly across the street when they don't sell food. So that's where it stems from. We're wanting to keep as much business under our roof if they're already in there shopping anyway. And the customer feedback has been, "I wish you had" A, B, and C. So we're doing our best to provide that to them.
Any questions from council?
So what was the issue with the Alcohol Control Board?
Well, they made these three, same three requests before the Alcohol Control Board, and the Alcohol Control Board discussed it for quite some time. And several members were opposed to distilled spirits being added for personal reasons, I think, or situations they saw. Others did not feel that the percentages should be increased. And then some of the members said, "Well, with respect to the beer, eh, we might not have a problem with it." But, so a motion was made for them to pass that portion of it. And that motion was three in favor, two against. And it takes four affirmative votes for the Alcohol Control Board to approve anything. And the chairman was present and decided not to vote. So the vote ended up being at 3 to 2. So that's the sort of history of what happened before the Alcohol Control Board.
So the issue was distilled spirits?
Well, three, you know, there are three issues that was asked before the Alcohol Control Board. Several members were not in favor of distilled spirits being added because they thought distilled spirits just didn't go with the retail shop. It's just, in their opinion. Several of them didn't like the idea of increasing the percentages because they said they still wanted them to be more retail than having alcohol related. And several did not have an issue with allowing them to sell non-craft beer, but not enough of them voted in favor of that, so.
Okay. And I asked them to have a seat while y'all were asking. Is there any questions of the folks that applied?
No.
Okay. All right. Council, what is in your hands for further discussion or other questions or for motions?
I make a motion to approve them selling non-craft beer only, not to the other two requests.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's allowed?
That tells you what you need to know as far as the ordinance. Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second to that?
A second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand and indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And Julia, I'll revise this ordinance accordingly and give that to you tomorrow for signatures.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the Downtown Business Improvement District. Ms. Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And this is, as you said, the second read of the Business Improvement District renewal. So we are seeking to renew the district that has been in place since 2002. We have successfully achieved the 51% benchmark and exceeded it in some instances where we need the support of our property owners. And staff does recommend approval of the ordinance as presented in the first read.
Okay. There was some discussion after the first reading. We'd actually received some information from a resident who was, had requested to have the residential portion. It was under the impression, I guess, and again unbeknownst to me, that residences had historically not been included in that. So I, again, personally, I had asked y'all to go ahead and review those and take those out. But in light of that, you were telling us in the work session, I'd like for you to talk a little bit more about that. The thought being that residential people that are in the downtown area, that they're paying into this bid district and they don't get any benefit from it. Well, that's, you'll kind of speak to that.
For one, the Business Improvement District statute at the state level does not exempt residential properties. So that is the baseline from which we started that. And I cannot speak to what happened really prior to my arrival on the scene. I know that when we did the renewal in 2017, residential properties were included, again, based off of the Business Improvement District statute. And in looking back at the historical documents, the petitions that I saw put in front of council did not suggest residential exemptions either. So from, working from that point, the benefits that we offer as part of the Business Improvement District do include a lot of activities that work towards enhancing the streetscape, the business frontage. A primary use of that revenue is for our Business Improvement District grants. Those grants are open to businesses and residents. They are open to anyone who pays the tax within our district.
So if you live in a residence, you can benefit from this grant money?
Correct.
Has that happened before?
Mr. Goss has taken a Business Improvement District grant for his residential property as well as two commercial properties in accordance with our standards.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Reed? So what you have, council, is you have a couple of different versions. There is the map that was originally presented that includes the residential portions. You also have, again, in light of that, I made the request to have another map drawn that would have excluded residences. And again, under the impression that residences weren't seeing, didn't have the opportunity to benefit from this program, to exclude residences and townhomes. It would have been nice to include apartments when we were looking at this, but many of those are, they're in commercial buildings. And to try to keep up with percentages and who's using that as a commercial function and who's using that as a residential function, it's really not fair to staff to try to parse that out and figure that out. So the map before you has townhomes and residences excluded, but not apartments.
Correct.
And again, those are two options that you have. Certainly, you can add a third option, or you can come up with a fourth one if you'd like.
I know we had one residential individual, I guess you could say, pose of complaint. Were there multiple, or just the one that was emailed?
We've not had multiple complaints. Out of the 26 properties, we've actually had five actively sign in support. We've had two deny their support, and the remainder have been unresponsive. But I would say that there have been no actual complaints from any of the residences, regardless of whether they're taking advantage of the benefits that are in the district.
I like the first map from the first reading. I think that everybody across the board has the benefit of the opportunities. Whether, as Lilly said earlier, and I'm not, correct if I'm wrong, but you know, even if they change their facade in any way, whether it's a window, if they're doing something, they can apply for a grant to help. And I think that that's across the board. I think that that's equal treatment to the properties that are there.
Well, and also think if you live in a subdivision or in an association of condos, you know, there's common areas, and you could, like you mentioned in the work session, you know, this is used for garbage cans, this is used for the turf that was recently put in. And so there is some benefit to the area in which you reside that may not necessarily be attached to your property. It's kind of an amenity of living there. But again, I've given you two different options. And like I said, there can be a third, or a fourth, or a fifth. You had made a comment. Did you want to put that in the form of a motion, or are you just, we in the mood to discuss a little bit more?
I was just in the mood to discuss.
Okay. Are you opening it up for? You guys can make a motion whenever you like.
All right. I make a motion to go with as presented in the original reading.
Second.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, you have the next item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Next item is the Electric System Annual Right-of-Way Clearing and Tremming Contract. We're requesting to once again use trees unlimited out of Cave Springs. We've used them for many years. Have a good relationship with them. The amount that we budgeted was the exact same amount from last year, so no change there. This is a budgeted expense. And the only change from last year to this year was a $5 an hour increase for an entire crew. So it's still $10 an hour cheaper than the approved amount that was in the budget, I mean, in the bid package that ECG approved. And we recommend your approval to execute this contract.
I think it's worth noting again, to have a $5 increase for that kind of work and the amount of equipment that's used to do that is a congratulations.
Yeah.
Chair will entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Three ayes and a hmm. I agree. Chick-fil-A is pretty good. The next three items will be voted on separately. These all involve units 3 and 4 at Plant Vogel. There's a decision been made by council. We've been well advised of in closed session over the last few months. These are in reference to Project J, Project M, and Project P. If you would give us, again, they're all identical, just different portions of the project. But if you'll please give us an overview of those three, and then council will take those up for consideration individually.
Correct. So the tender option that is up for the agenda item tonight came from a clause that was added in 2018 when the fate of Plant Vogel was in question. The costs were overrunning, and there was a question of whether or not to keep going or just cancel the whole project. In doing that, one of the negotiated deals that came in was for a option where if the cost overran beyond a certain dollar amount, that the participants would have the option to cap those costs and give up a portion of their generation out of those plants back to Georgia Power, and Georgia Power would cover those costs. That threshold has been met, and we are now to the point where we have to decide whether or not we would like to tender a portion of our generation out of the Vogel 3 and 4, or to keep them and just deal with the additional cost. At this point, I think Dan expressed, unit 3 is past its test. It's ready to start fueling. I wouldn't foresee, you know, at this point, the majority of the costs have been spent. And we lost one of our sources at Wonsley. We lost our coal generation. It costs us 10 megawatts. But we're getting out of 3, won't even cover the 10 we already lost. So we really need to keep as much generation that we can. We've been talking with some of our industrial customers that are doing some expansions, two of them, that are sizable. So we really can't afford to give up anything. We probably need to get more. So we are asking to take the option to not exercise the tender on the resolution for Projects J, M, and P.
One thing, I think it's important to note for people that are listening and maybe kind of trying to figure out, you know, it costs us, we could buy that excess capacity when we need it, but we've got to buy it off the market, which is much more expensive.
Correct.
And of course, that gets passed on to the customer.
Correct.
The alternative of that is, again, we stay the course and have this capacity that if it's not going to be used here for future growth, we have the opportunity to sell whatever portion we don't need, to sell that to the market at a premium, that actually becomes a source of revenue for us.
Correct. And that currently happens now on a monthly basis. We have times of the day when we don't need all of our allocation, and the commodities guys down at MEAG, they actually sell that out of the market for us. And that savings, on the opposite side of it, that revenue that we bring in helps us lower our costs to our customers as well.
Absolutely. Okay. Any questions for Derek on this? All right. If there are none, Chair will entertain a motion for the Project J tender resolution. Remember, we have to vote in favor of non-tendering if you want to keep that capacity.
I'm gonna make a motion that we do not support exercising the tender option on SBVJ.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And you want the rest of the letter?
No, we're gonna vote on these individually. It's a pretty big decision. And I got a motion and a second. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. We'll take up the same item relative to Project M and the tender resolution for that at Plant Vogel, units 3 and 4.
I'll make a motion that we do not support exercising the tender option on SBVJ.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and Project P tender Resolution.
I'll make a motion that we do not support exercising the tender option on SBVP.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Mr. Sanders, you are up next.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is the 2023 LMIG grant that we get annually from GDOT. This year, the grant amount is $283,448.41. It requires a 30% match. The match will come from the 2020 splosh. And we're requesting for permission for the mayor to sign the grant application and all related documents. And we do have to submit a list of streets that we plan to resurface with the grant. And those streets were mentioned earlier in the work session.
Okay. What I was gonna say, I know I've been on here for a good many years, and you know, as much money as we can possibly get towards repaving, we try. But, and right now, we got $600,000 for this. What, in the past, let's say five years ago, what was that number?
It varies from year to year.
It seems like it's a good bit up, though. I mean, we're just putting more money towards it now than we ever have, right?
Yes, yes.
183,000, 185,000 from the state, and then we contribute 200,000, 300,000, roughly to about 400,000, maybe.
And this year, I will tell you this. I could have put more roads in here and made that number higher. But the cost of resurfacing projects is really volatile right now because of the cost of crude. And there's a lag time because it's based on crude oil prices, but it's based on the price that, when they made the liquid asphalt. So there's a lag. So even though like gas prices are down right now, asphalt prices are up because of that lag time. Because the liquid asphalt that they're making now is based on the prices. They bought that crude when it was at the highest. So, you know, I just didn't know what the price of asphalt would be, so I kept it low in case. I didn't want to end up having a million-dollar project, and we had to back up and punt because that's happened with GDOT. In their last letting, they had to cancel several projects or reject the bids because the prices were so much higher than the estimated cost, and they didn't have the funding set up. So I didn't want that to happen. So that's the reason I kept this project intentionally lower than we normally would have. We normally have been shooting for 750. And that's sort of the reasoning behind keeping this where it's at.
But if things run well and you can get some extra roads in, you will. Is that how that works?
Yes. And to Tommy's point, I mean, next year, if things go into recession and we buy more, we do splosh money that matches, we'll still have that money available to put in more money next year and get more roads done at a cheaper price.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Any other questions for Tommy on this? If there's none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tommy. While Chief Carter's coming up, Chair will entertain a motion to add two items to the agenda.
So move. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Two items added. We'll get to those later. Hello, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Bring before you tonight a budgeted project. This is for the purchase of a thermal imaging camera, fire service, we call it a TIC. Basically, it is a computerized digital camera that works with infrared technology that allows a firefighter to see at night, also to see through smoke and other confined spaces. This has greatly enhanced, since we've started using these cameras, it's greatly enhanced our safety. It gets us into where we can get to the base of the fire quicker. Therefore, we're decreasing property loss. It's speeding up our time on rescues. And also, heaven forbid, if we have a downed firefighter, it allows us to find them quicker. This particular camera does meet all the NFPA requirements. It will go on the new tower truck that has arrived. We're equipping this truck as we speak. And the quotes were sought. There were two vendors that responded. And we requested purchase this MSA 6000 with our low bidder from Fireline for $8,680. This is a budget that would come out of the 2020 splosh.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve the purchase. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Forsyth, you are up, sir.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a project that we've been working on for some time. This is the water treatment plant, Sludge or Settle Solids Lagoon dredging project. That lagoon holds all the settled solids from our drinking water treatment plant. And it has held solids in there for the entire 52-year history of that treatment plant. And not a drop has been removed. This project will remove approximately five to 10 years' worth of solids out of that lagoon. We sent in an RFP and received bids with the low bid being from Denali Water Solutions for $2,699,300. It is a budgeted, bond-funded project and recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
I read through that this is coming in below.
Below budget, yes, sir.
Which is good. It actually leaves them additional money in bond funds to do some other projects because first, they waited to complete the water pollution control plant, and that came in under. This is coming in under, so the bonds over issued in 2018 will sub more money to spend on some other projects due.
Good. Any other discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief DePrima, before you come up, I do want to mention, as was just mentioned during the water treatment, you know, we move through these meetings pretty quickly. Council gets this information well in advance. We have an opportunity to talk with staff. I know, again, we covered some pretty important things tonight relative to Plant Vogel and this dredging. This dredging project, we've been talking about for at least two, if not three, years. The Vogel stuff, I know that staff and Dan have put extensive amounts of time working on that and informing council. If there's a perception that we're just kind of flipping through and doing all this, we do see, we just do a lot of our homework. So when we get to this, we're able to move pretty expeditiously. But there's an awful lot of care and expertise from staff that gets sent our way before we make these decisions. So that being said, Chief DePrima, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for the police department to apply for a law enforcement training grant. It is a time-sensitive grant, so we have to put this application in by the 15th of August. And it's a request to purchase equipment and to use the grant to pay for training for school safety. The school cannot apply for this grant, but local law enforcement can.
Thank you. And if there's any questions, if not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovell, you've got the final item.
Yes, Mayor. This is a mutual release with the McKenzie at Oak Hill Cemetery regarding a oversell of some cemetery or... a oversell of some cemetery or, of some cemetery lots where we're actually going to be providing them two new lots and moving a headstone for them. It is recommended for approval by staff.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
All in favor, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
I just want to mention that Carlsville City Schools starts Wednesday, so it's what I wish all the students and teachers a great year as they start a new year. I know I've got a freshman and a senior, so it's a transition year for us. So, and also, I want to thank my orthodontist. For three years, I've had braces. I've had them off since July 19th, and I'm very excited about it.
If I'd have known that, I'd have brought you a Snickers bar.
Popcorn. I've eaten corn on the cob.
For you. Anything else? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we'll stay gold.